Alright, so this is my fifth period class. It's a current events class. I have mostly eighth graders, but I also have a few seventh graders in there. And most of these kids I've actually taught for several years. In fact, a good, been many of them were fourth or fifth grader from my north side. So they've had me for about five years now. So anyway, you guys want to see the town city hall? I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Edward Guzman, and then I will divide you guys up and let you know where you're gonna be up here, okay?
How you guys doing?
Good.
How much of an educational lesson has Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Foster be all accustomed to giving y'all about the city? Y'all learned a little bit about the city already? How much of it?
A little bit. So eighth grade, they have to learn about municipal government, county government, state, federal. But that lesson actually comes in April. So I gave a little crash course on how we do things, but they actually haven't learned the nuts and bolts of the government yet.
Okay. So I'll start from the very top of the city government structure. So Commissioner Foster is one of five elected officials for the city of Cedar Town. You got Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Sam Branch, the chairman, or the chairwoman, Jessica Payton, Commissioner Dale Tuck, and then Commissioner Andrew Carter. So those five are your leaders of the city. And what they do is they decide the big policy decisions. So if you guys want a skate park, you guys want more soccer fields, you want to see more police officers and fire trucks, they're the five that make those big decisions and say, okay, we're gonna vote on this, we're gonna make it happen. And we're gonna find a way to get it. Then my role, my name is Edward Guzman, I'm the city manager for the city of Cedar Town. So chief executive officer. Think of like CEOs for companies. They've got their boards, CEOs do, where they decide the big decisions for a company, the big policies. When they make their votes and they decide on stuff, it's my role along with the rest of our city staff that we have to try to make it happen, to implement that dream and that vision, and to figure out how to get it going. I mean, one perfect example is Goodyear Soccer Complex. We're trying to build two more official soccer fields to put lights out there at Goodyear Park. I'm sure some of y'all already played at Goodyear Park, and y'all can tell against the dark. Though the daytime just changed with the daylight savings. But it would get dark like at 6:00 PM and kids couldn't practice, they can't play anymore, they gotta go home. The commissioners decided this was something that they wanted to do and they wanted to see happen. So right now, I'm negotiating with the people that build it, that make the equipment, and I'm trying to get the best price for Cedar Town. That way, the tax dollars that you guys spend, not just your parents, because y'all go to the grocery store, y'all buy stuff. So you guys are pitching into the city government. Anytime you go to Kroger and you buy something, there's that line item that says sells tax. You guys are paying money, and it's going to the city government. Some of that money's going to the city government to get these operations going. But that's, that's my role, just one example of my role, is, you know, working with the day-to-day operations, operations, and trying to get everything going. If I can negotiate and I can get that good price, I'm gonna present it to Commissioner Foster and the other four, and then they get to decide yes, no, or let's go back and try to figure something else out. That's, that's part of the work that we do. And then the rest of the city operations, I mean, you've got a rec director, fire chief, police chief, a finance officer. We've got a building inspector in charge of making sure that the homes are up to code. Code enforcement officer, so people are not taking care of their properties. There's a very big role that exists there. Did I say police chief? Police chief is right here. And many other roles in government. For those of you that live in Cedar Town, in the city, you guys have water and sewer. So some of y'all might live out what's called the county, and you're, it's your house that might be the seventh tank. But for folks that live in the city, we have a water plant and a sewer plant. And water, I think most of you already know, our water comes from the big spring that's right here on Whistah Hicken. And then everybody's sewer goes to a plant that's near northwest, or Berkeley Park. And so that, that's part of all the operations of the city. We've got almost a hundred and twenty employees that run through all this and the different departments. You know, I've got one sitting in the back. Department of Tourism and Economic Development, that type of role. That big auditorium that's right there, trying to bring shows or, you guys, I know, took part in this growing up, like the concerts that would go on inside the auditorium, like in elementary school. Also, Economic Development, which is trying to bring more businesses, more industries into this town. They usually need to kind of talk to the city government first to try to figure out, okay, how do we make this happen? What's the cost, what kind of permits are needed? But close to a hundred and twenty employees. Two major bank accounts, with one which is called the bail fund, which is how we fund our police officers, police cars, the fire department, the work that we do for recreation. And we bring in probably, and spend a little over ten million dollars, somewhere in that range, every year. So that's just Cedar Town government, about, close to ten million. For your water and your sewer operations, it's about four million. And they're two separate accounts, because people pay their water bills and their sewer bills every month. So to get those services, that's why there's two separate accounts. Then we can get to the weeds and talk about things like splosts and those special accounts that the voters have to vote on. Say that on a different day. But that's, that's the city government operations. A lot of people get confused about the differences between city and county. So there's, there's somebody that's called a county manager, there's county commissioners. And they're in charge of quality of life and different things. Think of your courthouses. For folks that don't live in the city, they have their own, let's say, building inspector or permitting, or their own police department. You know, you see Polk County Police Department, which is separate from what Cedar Town Police Department is. They work with each other and help each other out, especially sometimes something serious will happen and those officers will work together and get things going and try to make things better. So that's, that's, that's an overview of what Cedar Town is like. I don't know if I went too deep into the details.
You did good.
That's, everybody makes a difference for the city, all the employees. You've got, one thing I didn't miss is public works. Public works operations, that's making sure your streets are okay. That's making sure, you know, if you got sidewalks out front, they need to make a plan for trying to fix that. They've got crews out there that in Cedar Town will monitor the roads, street sweep them, pick up limbs that have come down. Tree comes down during a storm, George power comes in, make sure there's no electricity around it. And then our guys are out there cutting that tree and clearing the road back up so people can do what they need to do.
Alright, you guys have any questions before we give you out? Nope? Alright, so let me show you what I got. I've got several different commissioners. And we have a city manager, we also have a, so we have our city clerk, we have a city attorney, and we have two delegates, okay? So when I call your name, come on up and get your script. We're gonna start with Commissioner DJ Pace, who's gonna be our chairman. You got DJ? Alright, up next, we have Rhea Patel, city commissioner. We have Abby Allred, Brendan McDonald, and Robyn Kent. Alright, you guys will stand back here for a second. You guys are the five people elected to represent the people of Cedar Town, and your oath is going to be administered by Chief Newsom.
So all of our city commissioners, before they take their position as city commissioner, are given this oath and swear to this oath. So I'm gonna ask you to do that before you take your positions. Now I want you to listen carefully to the language in the oath and let it sink in on the great responsibility that commissioners take and the promises they make to the people that elected them to do that job, of how important it is, that they do the right thing for the right reason all the time, setting aside their own personal positions on things to make the right decision for the citizens. So if you'll raise your right hand, and I say, "I," you state your name. "I..."
Ron.
And then, listen carefully, and then at the end. "I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of Commissioner of the city of Cedar Town during my service in office, and I will discharge the duties of this office to which I have been elected to the best of my ability. I do further swear that I have not, in order to influence my election to the office of Commissioner, directly or indirectly, expressed or implied, any promise of support to any person for any office in the government of the city of Cedar Town. I do further swear that I'm not currently the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state. I do further swear that I'm not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state, which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of Commissioner according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia. I do further swear that I will not knowingly permit my duties as Commissioner to be influenced by theater, favor of affection, or reward or hope thereof, but in all things pertaining to my office, I will be governed by my convictions as to the public good. Finally, I will support and defend the charter and ordinances of the city of Cedar Town as well as the Constitution and laws of the United States of America. Do you swear?"
I swear.
Mr. Foster, your commissioners have been due this morning.
Chief. Mr. Chairman, if you want to go sit over there where you said you gathered. Commissioner Patel, say, "Are you over there?" Commissioner Allred. City Commissioner McDonald, be over here. Commissioner Kent, down here beside us. Alright, now the five of you have selected Mr. Christian Perez to be the city manager. Mr. Manager, your seat is over here beside Commissioner McDonald. City has appointed Amir Meridian Esquire to be the city attorney. He's the attorney to the city's chairman. And if our city clerk can make sure that everyone in attendance gets an agenda, please.
And something I didn't mention is city clerk for Cedar Town has a lot of the administrative operations of the city. Mittie Allen's sitting right there in the back. But the ladies that you see at the front window, they're our customer service reps. Mittie's our supervisor and ensures that our public gets the information they need to get whenever they come to the city hall. And the other duty of the city clerk is the record. So we have a vault here in the city, and it's got records, uh, what is it? About over a hundred years old now? Over a hundred years old worth of minutes, documentation, the history of the city is in that vault. The city clerk is a keeper of those records and also the secretary of the commissioners. So when the commissioners have special events or conferences they need to go to, city clerk make sure that that's taken care of, their schedules are right.
Okay, before we call your meetings, I want everybody up there to lean into the microphone and make sure that you can be heard. So, Robyn, state your name.
Ooh, Robyn Kent.
Alright.
Christian Perez.
Amir Meridian.
Howdy, all right.
Alright. As soon as the clerk finishes making sure everybody gets an agenda. Let's see what time it's got. We're doing perfect. You've only got six hours and ten minutes before we have to start this meeting, right? Okay. You get one of your side? Okay.
Our call to order this meeting of Cedar Town City Commissioners. I'd like to welcome Zarian England to the podium to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a covenant for which the same, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a copy of the parents' name, which needs to be approved?
I'll have a motion. I'll make a motion. What I would say then?
I'd say a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. I'd agree to. Up next, we have delegations and public presentations. Please welcome Ella Wollman.
Thank you, my name is Ella Wollman, I'm with the city JJ SL, and I would like your plus permission to use the part of the indoor angle for the Cedar Town yard. Any questions?
I want executives, we need to use the, the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the third angle.
Do I have any more questions? Do I have a motion?
I think a motion.
I'll say a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Johnson requests to use a football field at Berkeley Park this summer for a football game. Chris, join us.
How is the football playing? It had a lot of success. Waiting for my coaches, and I want to be a member of the community by having a football team again. The day should be, June nineteenth, eight a.m. to twelve a.m.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Kent. Um, what, what are the age groups within the camp?
Uh, age of twelve.
I have a question. Are you charged with the camp, or is it free for kids?
It'll be free.
Any more questions? Commissioner McDonald.
Will you be giving the city such as extra garbage cans or police?
Extra garbage cans would be nice, and also just to make sure that shit will be open on the park.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm in motion. I'll say a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. I agree to it. Manager, report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I'm gonna give you some brief updates of things on the city. Construction of Chick-fil-A is nearly complete. We expect them to open in a month and a half, all three quarters. The record firm had a very great opening day for spring months. Therefore, we're different kids playing soccer, baseball, and T-Ball at third building. Finally, we're looking forward to the annual art exhibit, which you approved. There will be food trucks, live music, adult shows, vendors, lots of stuff there.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. I support new business, consideration of the chicken's orders. Commissioner Kent?
I think we need to allow chickens in the city limits, without any chickens. I'd like to see chickens in every yard, field, and maybe even along the roads. And even though there may be poop from the chickens... I think it would be very beneficial for our green grass and because the chicken poop could be used for projects and make our city look better and therefore make people want to come by.
Well, I have serious reservations about this idea. Is there anything local to do really?
In my opinion, it would be illegal, I mean. You have chickens all over people's homes, creating a potential health hazard all over the city. Not to mention the wildlife issues.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second motion?
I'll say a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, all opposed?
Aye.
The vote is too boring to oppose. Being the chair, I would now vote to break the tie. I vote down, the motion bells. Commissioner, the boardists. Commissioner, the government.
I would like to thank our police firefighters and city staff. They work really hard trying to keep folks to be safe and protected, and we're very grateful.
Commissioner Kent?
I would like to thank our city for making a skate park in the future, because I personally like the city, and I think it is a really good contribution to our city for, not only the kids, but even the young adults who like to have fun.
Commissioner, the board?
I would like to encourage people to go out and shop around at the bookstores.
Commissioner, Allred?
I'm very happy the chicken flies open because it's a very, it's a very convenient spot in town and it can, um, give teenagers good first jobs.
Lastly, I appreciate all the commissioners, managers, and attorneys. I appreciate the work, hard work you've been doing, and keep it up. Well, finally, I have a question, actually. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Would you do adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.
That was pretty good. I think particularly the press is probably impressed with the length of the commissioner reports, yeah?
I will note for the record that I have sat through very much longer commissioner reports. So bravo.
So we came up with a script in the past forty-eight hours. We practiced it yesterday, we practiced it twice today. These guys put what they wanted to in it, and I helped them just with the skeleton framework of it. But you guys are a really sharp class, and I'm extremely proud of the work that you've done and you guys are gonna have to wake up when you get to the learning economy of this government when we start that chapter in Georgia Studies next month. And you've seventh graders as well, this is stuff that you're gonna learn about next year. So, you know, stay curious about these things, stay watching the news, know what's going on in your town. I think one of the things that frustrates us the most, and I might say it makes me mad, but something that frustrates, I think I can speak for all of us, is when, when people, and I'm not saying they do it to be mean, but a lot of times people will say, "Oh, I didn't know that was happening," or "Why is this happening?" Well, there's some things that I had to clear up in the past week because we did something, we passed something in November, and they didn't know it. Well, it was in the newspaper, it was in Polk Today, it was on our Facebook pages. But, you know, what can we do other than just keep trying to get the work out? And I think communication is one of those things that we can always, as humans, improve upon. But, you know, you gotta, if you wanna know something, seek out the truth, right? Seek out knowledge, so that's what we try to do. Mr. Manager, do you have anything else to add?
No, just, that was very impressive, guys. Commissioner Foster talked so well. Y'all, I wonder if any of you elected office? Who wants to be a commissioner someday? Who wants to be my boss someday?
Here we go?
Here.
Yeah.
And then, one more, one more thing I want to say too, you know, for anybody that has an interest in a lot of different things, on planning, finance, management, like the world that I play. A lot, a lot of people don't realize that in city and county government, there are a lot of different roles that make that organization, that city or that county work. You know, I gave y'all some of the details, but there, we have staff that have gone to all sorts of different schools, or gotten all sorts of different degrees, or even went, got straight out of high school and have done different roles. There's, there are so many different types of roles in our city. So, you know, when y'all get older and y'all start thinking about what y'all wanna do, it's goals. You know, look at what we do in the city, look at what's done in the county. There are, there's such a huge variety of roles. I'm pretty sure that whatever interest you may have, there's something that a local government has for that individual that's fun and exciting. I love that. It's fun, sometimes, you know, we get the complaints and it kind of drives us crazy sometimes, but, you know, all in all, it drives us crazy.
I mean, Chief wants to say something as well, but I'm glad you mentioned about the good things, because sometimes, and I tell you guys this still, if you always let the negativity be on your front burner, it's gonna drive you crazy. There's, there's negative people that we dealt with already this week. There's, throughout your life, if you live to a hundred and fifteen, you'll deal with negative people who always wanna just, you know, look at the one great cloud in the sky. I had a pastor tell me one time not to give those type of people too much of your oxygen. Think of it like a flame. If you, if you give it oxygen, what will the flame continue to do? It'll continue to burn. But if you deprive the flame of your oxygen, it'll burn itself out. And that's something, it almost sounds like something Mark Luther King or Gandhi would have said, but it's something that, that, you know, I have to remind myself sometimes not to let the haters get to you too much, okay? And also, not to also understand that just because somebody has complained, that that's necessarily negative. Because there are things, you know, we're human, there are things that we could all improve on better in our lives. And as a team, we try to do the best that we can. Sometimes we gotta know those things, right? From the outside. So when people bring concerns to us, that's also very important, okay? Chief?
Real quickly, I want to point something out that's very obvious to me, but it may not be obvious to you at this point. It seems like the day before yesterday, I was in the seventh or eighth grade. And so, we have long days in short years. But as I look around, the team of the people that are in management for the city of Cedar Town, I look at our commissioners, and I think every one of them graduated from Cedar Town High School. So they once were sitting where you're sitting. Our chief financial officer sitting in the back, that's our boss, Cedar Town High School, class of nineteen ninety-two. Your police chief. Cedar Town High School, class of nineteen ninety. Our city, our city manager, Cedar Town High School. Our city clerk, Mitya, I think you're CHS too, aren't you? I won't ask you what class. Our director of economic development, Oscar Ginsburg, city of Cedar Town. Our fire chief, our public works director. All of those are people that at one time were seventh or eighth graders with the city of Cedar Town schools. And so, one day in the future, that seems like forever in the future, those roles, police chief, fire chief, CFO, city manager, commissioner, public works director, recreation director, may very well be one of you. So keep your nose to the books, keep your hand to the grindstone, and you'll do well. And by that time, I'll be the old retired guy that will look back on today and go, "I remember when Robyn was in my wife's first grade class. I remember when he came here as an eighth grader to do mock city commission meeting. And now he's chair of the city commission, or he's city attorney, or whatever." And so, we love you, and we got your back.
And I'm gonna end with this really briefly. There is a phrase in Latin that I actually learned, you know, I lived in Canada for a while. At the camp that I worked at, the phrase in Latin is "non hominis solus," which translates into "not for ourselves alone." I've got this in my classroom, you might be seeing it on my bookshelf, got it on my keychain. What this means is to take something not for your own personal benefit, but for the benefit of others, for the benefit of your community. You don't have to be elected to do that. You took an oath today, and that was kind of hidden in all those words, that you're doing something not for your personal benefit, but for the benefit of your community. You can serve your community in an elected role, absolutely. But you can also serve your community by going out and volunteering, going out picking up trash, going out breeding to children, going out donating things. You probably already are associated with this in your churches or in some of the clubs that you're in. But the thing that makes my heart happy is to see you growing and getting involved in things. Yes, you enjoy things for your own sake, but not for yourselves alone. You are the fabric and the future of our town, and that makes me proud. And that, that's what motivates me every morning to get there to the school and to give you just a little bit of me so that you can go and grow and do further for our entire community. I'm pretty darn proud of you. Thanks, guys. DJ, Mr. Chairman?
I got questions. Yeah? So like, when y'all up there, or whatever, like, the commissioners, like, has it ever been like a disagreement type? Clean type, does it, how does it feel like? Besides like...
Well, you have disagreements, um, you know, you had a two-two vote, right? And you had to split the top. I've been doing this, now this is my ninth year on the commission. And in the whole time that I've been a commissioner, we've had two votes where it came down... time that I've been a commissioner, we've had two votes where it came down to a tie. Um, in, in both instances, some people were happy with the way the tie came down, some people were not. Um, some said, you know, they had different reasons for voting the way they did, even though they were on the same side as the yeas or the nays. But, we don't take it personal. Um, we, we get along very well. That's the five of us up there at the top of that picture frame there. That's Sam, Andrew, obviously me, Jessica, and Del. And at any given time, we've had a disagreement. I, I, I can tell you that nine years of it, I've never felt it personal, ever, and, you know, sometimes we might get a little, I won't say heated, but there've been times we've said, "Hey, you know, explain to me why you're feeling this way because I'm not there," or "I'm kind of split on this, so, you know, what, what's your opinion about this?" And we still may not come to the same conclusion, but the, the important thing is that we show mutual respect, and we agree that even if the vote splits and we don't, you know, if I don't get my way, or I get my way and somebody else doesn't, we, we still come to our conclusions for the greater good of the people that we represent.
We're lucky where we live, because it's not like that in every city in Georgia. You guys do a Google search, you'll find some cities or counties in this state that they elected officials by head way too much. And that, and in those locations, that makes the staff's life and the manager's life pretty hard, because then they're having to try to figure out, okay, there's so many conflicts between the elected officials, how do I focus on implementing their dreams and their visions for the city or county? But, yeah, y'all should do a Google search, they'll find some, they'll find some videos too. But, no, we're, we're in a great situation, and that's why I, I personally think that that's why there's a lot of growth going on in this area, uh, new things that are coming, because industries, businesses, they pay attention to that kind of stuff. They, they know how to do it just as well as we do. They look at what's going on in those locations, how stable is the government, how do people feel about where they live? They, they do the research before they ever even start talking to us.
And let me tell you one other good thing that I think our board does very well. If we have a concern, we bring our concern to the one person that we are the boss of. And I don't mean, when I say boss, we're not just day-to-day bosses, we make the policy, we sit here and make policy. He implements the poli- policies, and then he is the boss of the police chief, of the fire chief, of the secretaries of the parks, and the, the various people in the administrative department, okay? And then they run their departments. There are other cities where commissioners or council members kind of micromanage, you know what that word means? They get their fingers in, and they start calling the chief director, they start telling this police officer what to do, and that's out of the chain of command, and that's not really right. Um, so we do a really good job of, of knowing our role, knowing that our role is purely on policy. Chairman, and we might have a concern, you know, you were asking what is a dead new session, and I explained that that has to do with personnel, real estate, and legal matters that can't be in an open forum for, for, you know, state law reasons. But, when those things come up, he gives us briefings about it, and then we have to make a decision with the information that we have. But we do not get involved in the, I mean, this happens sometimes, somebody will call me and say, "Hey, Foster, you know, I grew up with you, I played baseball with you, my cousin needs a job at city hall, can you get her a job and give her my cousin?" Apply. Go to city hall, fill out an application, and if your cousin, if she rises to the top of that list and gets the job, it's good on her, she'll get it on merit, because she earned it, not because I have any influence in it. Some people in other cities may not be like that, shame on them if they're that way, but that's, that's how we keep things clean and above the work, and it, it doesn't create headaches for us, it doesn't create headaches for him, nor the department, if that's the way it should be. Any other questions? All right, I need a motion to start lunch.
Me. All in favor?